I'd like to call to order the Westmont Village Board meeting February 18, 2016 at 6:04 PM. And I'd ask Clerk Simmsky to call the roll.
Mayor Gunther?
Here.
Clerks here, Trustee Addington?
Here.
Trustee Barker?
Here.
Trustee Barry?
Here.
Trustee Guzzo?
Here.
Trustee Little?
Here.
Trustee Nero?
Here.
Manager May?
Here.
Finance Director Parker?
Here.
All right, would we please all rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone and move on to open forum. Last chance, if anybody's here for an item that's not on the agenda, you have an opportunity now to come forward. If not, then open forum will be closed, we'll move on to reports. First one is mine as the mayor, and I'll talk about a meeting we held right bef— two meetings before. We kicked off our 100th Anniversary Committee meeting, the end of last year. We had our second meeting today. This is our 95th year of being incorporated as a village. And we're preparing for the 100th celebration in 2021. So the committee's been coming up with a lot of ideas, a lot of different events and activities to hold. So just as an awareness, if anybody out there has anything you're interested in seeing, or fire trucks from 1921, whatever, kind of email Larry McIntyre or get in touch with him. He's kind of coordinating those efforts. I'd also like to call Glenn, out of that booth. He's in there somewhere. And Glenn?
Well, while he's coming up, you were—he sent an email around regarding what—he'll describe the two-factor authentication. And I asked him to, instead of trying to tutor you by email what that is, he's got an example of why we're doing it and what your preferences are for your own accounts with the village.
So pretty much, two-factor authentication is very similar to what you had all the way back with debit cards when they came out. You had the card, which is something you had, and then you also had a PIN code, which is something you knew. So you needed both forms in order to access your account. The general consensus, federal government is slowly moving down to state and local, where you're—we're going to two-factor when you're logging into your email. You know, you've heard all of the breaches that have happened at Home Depot and Target and all the other retailers. This just adds that second-level security with a token or a password, a secondary password that changes every 30 seconds. It will allow us to simplify the general password, and it also will make it a little bit quicker for people to get on and off the machines, and it adds that layer of security, which, because of the technology we're using now, we are more exposed to the internet than we ever were before. So the two options are what's called a soft token, which gets installed on a mobile device, whether it's your iPhone or your Android phone, BlackBerry, any of the units out there, or a hard token, which some of you may have used with some of your banking accounts. So I'll put them up here.
Do you need the IT guy to show you how to use that?
Write those down, we got his passwords for a minute.
Yes. So pretty much, the hard token will change every 30 seconds, or the soft token will change. So it all depends on what you're more comfortable having. And I was quite shocked as the numbers came in from the departments on what people preferred. We thought more people would go hard token, and it's been—some departments are heavier than others, but there's others that came in almost 50/50, so.
And to be clear, this is a second password you would use. You pick your first password that you'll always have. If someone ever learned what your password was, they would need the second token—the second password or the token to.
It stops someone having to just keep guessing at that one password, because they're never going to have the second piece of information, so.
And I'm sure Glenn will answer any individual questions anybody has, but I thought it was important just to mention—talk to all of us at one time.
Yeah, and it's real easy, too, is you log in, like if you log into your email account now, it's just your password, you'll be prompted with a second screen, they'll just ask for the token, you'll just enter that in, and you're in your email.
And you're waiting for a reply from everyone with their preferences, how they want their...
Yep, there's a PO on tonight's board meeting for the actual software licenses, and we have that heavily estimated hard tokens, because the cost for hard tokens is more because you're buying the physical device. So when we give them the final numbers, that will adjust down, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
And final item I have, I'd like to call Larry McIntyre to the podium. As everyone knows, one of the items I enjoy doing is recognizing one of our own when they achieve something either in the community or outside the community, and tonight Larry's got a story about one of those individuals.
Sure, and actually, I'm not going to talk too much, just do a brief introduction, but people may know Rachel Dorsey, she's going to come up here in just a moment, from the Park District. She works over there at the main desk, and a very friendly face whenever people go over there, great customer service. But their family recently embarked on a very fun journey in which their son Riley participated in a national event down in Texas in regards to football. And so I'd like to invite Rachel and Riley up to talk about that.
Well, thank you for having us. So yes, Riley was selected to participate in a national event through USA Football. He started at just a camp that was held at Hinsdale Central High School. It was just for two days, and we thought it'd be great for him to get the experience working with some college coaches, some high school coaches. And then he was actually selected to move on to their development games, which were held in Canton, Ohio, and that was in late June, early July. He did a camp for a week there, and we thought that was really awesome. He was selected to move on, and we thought that was kind of going to be the end of our journey as well. He got to play at Hall of Fame Stadium, which was a very cool experience for him. And then in September, we got another email that said he was selected to move on even further and be part of their U-14 National Team. So he got to go to Texas and play at AT&T Stadium, which was even a bigger deal for someone who loves and breathes football. So he got to go there and work with a bunch of college coaches again, and play on the O-line for the USA Football U-14 National Team.
Very good.
Very nice.
Again, Riley, you want to give us some—your insight to it?
It was a very fun experience for me. It was just overwhelming.
Yeah, you learned a lot?
Yes.
Good. And again, we just want to call you up and congratulate you for that accomplishment.
How many colleges have been recruiting you yet?
Take a number.
Those aren't pants. I thought those were pants, that's all you.
Big boy. That's all I have, I go to Clerk Simmsky.
I just have about three items. Our next Public Information Committee meeting will be March 31st. I believe we'll start at 4:30. I don't know, Larry's walking away. It should start at 4:30. And remind everybody again, we're getting down to the wire. The deadline is a week away for the Westmont Citizen of the Year Award nomination forms to be filled out and submitted. So one week, and you have to be done. We do start at 4:30, right? Okay, thank you. And the last thing I wanted to announce is that the permanent—or temporary locations, which are the ones closest to us, like Downers Grove, Village Hall, for early votings, opened February 29th and will run till March 12th. The ones at Yorktown will be open from the 29th till March 14th, they'll have a couple of more days. So anyway, just if you have to vote, the early vote, those are your opportunities. That's all I have.
Thank you. And I do have—I apologize, one more quick item. Yesterday, we had an opportunity, Manager May, myself and Larry McIntyre, and Larry Forsberg, had an opportunity to go to the Oakbrook Hills Hilton in Westmont and look at renovations, that there's $7 million renovation, and it's going to be spectacular. We met the new general manager, and we invited him here in two weeks to unveil their new restaurant. He won't tell us the name, but they're putting a lot of time and effort into it, and it's going to look beautiful. So two weeks from tonight, we'll invite him and have him give an update on the hotel. Attorney Zeminek had a family emergency at his home, so he's not here tonight, so I'll ask Manager May to give his report.
Don't ask me any legal questions.
No.
The—I did have only one item that you were all polled about scheduling, looking for availability to schedule our first, well, I should say our first and only, hopefully, budget workshop meeting with the village board. Given your combined availability, the best opportunity for that meeting will be on Thursday, April 7th. If we can, we'll start at 6 o'clock like this meeting, and hopefully that'll be good, and we're going to do our darndest to get through the whole thing in one meeting. If another meeting is needed, we will decide at that time, you know, whether to go into the next week or do it on a Saturday, like was suggested as well. But that's all I had, so, you know, lock that out for April 7th.
Okay, thank you. We'll move to trustees, and I'll start with Trustee Addington.
Just a couple things tonight. First of all, economic development, our next meeting will be March 2nd, that'll be at 9 o'clock in the morning at the room behind me, so we hope people will come. We keep getting new applicants, so it's exciting. Brea Health Services, which is at 6501 South Cass, has also done a $7 million investment. That is now done, and they are open, and if you get a chance, go down and look at it, it's very nice. Third thing is Mariano's. They want to open here within the next month and a half or two months, and I think they're still looking to do some more hiring there. Last I heard, they were about two or three-fourths done, but still need some more people, so anybody who's interested can check them out. And that said, on economic development, we've had a couple of ribbon cuttings. Flo's had theirs, and we had one for Woodgrain, and they're doing quite well. So strategic plan is going to be talked about a little later, so there's not much to talk about with that. And then the last thing that I have is that next week, you'll get my current soap opera report on what's going on in Springfield, because we have a DuPage Mayors and Managers Legislative Meeting Tuesday morning. So I'll be sure to fill all of you in, because I know you can't wait for the next chapter. And then the other is, if you go outside at the display case, we now have a display from the Lions Club for our 80th anniversary. A lot of that stuff has come from some of our other members, Bill Wavak especially. But I also gave to Steve May tonight two newspapers that Bill Wavak had from the 50th anniversary, and he's going to get those duplicated for us, so everybody gets a chance to see some of the pictures and the other things. But what's really interesting is there's a picture on the front page of the July 71 issue, that's when Jules groundbreaking took place at Cass and Ogden, and that's Mayor Pasquinelli, Fire Chief Frank Johannick-Marie Stad, and Kurt Farstead was the village clerk at the time. So Jules is only 50 years old, we're celebrating 100. And that's all I have, sir.
Thank you. Trustee Little?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a couple of items. Our next Administration Committee meeting will be March 3rd at 4:30. And then I'm asking everyone to take a look at our social media for the village. Starting within the next few days, look for daily posts from the Village of Westmont on Facebook, Twitter, and Google+. Some of the themes that we'll be working with are Motivational Mondays, Green Tip Tuesdays, Pet and Wildlife Wednesdays, Throwback Thursdays, which will be Westmont History, and then Westmont First Fridays, Safety Saturdays, and Senior Life Sundays. So look for those, make sure you check out our Twitter, our Facebook, and Google. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Trustee Barry?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Prior to tonight's meeting, we had a Public Works meeting, and we had a full slate, that's why we started a little late today. But we had covered the possibility of water rate increases. The last time we've had an increase is 2009. These water rates would—the increase would be for capital improvements. We see about a $9 million improvement needed over the next couple of years, so we'll be looking into that, and there'll be notices going out in the future. The Public Works updated us of—there are seven and a half miles of road resurfacing that is being finalized, and that'll be the last stage of our bonding. So I know a lot of residents have been waiting for that, and that's a great program. We've also have—the downtown LED lighting is going to be coming our way, which is going to be a great improvement to our downtown. And this is also going to be our 20th anniversary as an Illinois Tree City. So our Arbor Day, John—John was not here today, but he's going to be planting about 20 trees at the schools, and combined with that, and I'll kind of cross over to the Environmental Improvement Commission, there's going to be an essay and an art contest. So the village website—if you go to the village website, and you can sign up for that essay contest and art contest, the deadline for that is going to be March 11th. So again, that's at the village website. Other good news is we have a lot of salt left over due to the mild winter, so that should help us budget-wise, and we will be able to store it until next year and also use it. And Virgil just updated us on our new fire trucks that'll be coming, and the maintenance and so forth. So that was a brief discussion of what happened at the Public Works. The Stormwater Management Report, annual update. We're coming up now on the anniversary of the approval of the Stormwater Infrastructure Sales Tax Referendum. So Larry McIntyre and the Public Works staff is working on an annual report to update the highlight of all the stormwater management-related projects from the last year. So the public will be very informed on where that referendum sales tax money is going, and hopefully they will see those improvements as they come. Brush pickup is coming. Reminder, we will have our weekly brush pickup program with waste management resume in April. There's details on the website and Neighbors Magazine. There's certain restrictions and bundling that has to be done. It's a little different than in years past where you could leave just about anything. So again, that will be in April. And then the Environmental Improvement Commission is very active. The mayor-manager and I met with them recently at the Pompey Restaurant, and I think all of us were very impressed at this commission. They really have done a lot, and they continue to have a lot of things in the works. They will no longer be meeting here at the Village Hall, so again, starting the first Monday of the month, they will be at the library. And then they're also working on the Clarendon Hills to develop the Richmond Educational Garden, and they are planning a fundraiser for this event sometime around Earth Day. So again, we will be having details coming soon. And that's what I have, Mayor.
Well, thank you. And just one thing to add, during our budget workshop, the board's going to address the strategy for spending that money for stormwater management, as far as bonding or annual projects, so we'll have a better idea where we're going with that this—at Budget Workshop, April 7th. Okay. Trustee Nero?
Thank you, Mayor, just a couple things. We're going to have a special Public Safety Committee meeting. It's going to be Wednesday, March 2nd at 6:30 in the evening at the Fire Department Headquarters. It's going to be in the community room. Going to have a real important discussion on our public safety dispatch, so I encourage everybody that can make it to please come. And our next regular scheduled Public Safety Committee meeting will be April 14th here in Village Hall. Coming up in May, May 24th at 6:30, and later in the year in October, we're going to offer a public CPR training. Now, there's going to be a signup form and details coming soon online, so keep your eyes out for that. And then there's also still time to sign up for Citizens Fire Academy. It does start in March, so if you are interested, please check it out online. And last but not least, I'd like to invite up Chief Mulhern to talk about his recent—this recent award that we received. It's the Special Olympics Bronze Award.
Thank you, Trustee Nero. Last week, Sergeant Brian Gruen, our Special Olympics Coordinator for the department, attended the kickoff meeting for the upcoming year for Special Olympics, and he came back and was proud to announce that the Westmont Police Department, for the first time in several years, exceeded our goals, and we exceeded the $5,000 level to receive a bronze award. Last year, the Westmont Police Department collected $5,578.51 in donations, all to go to Special Olympics, which outgo to the Special Olympians, and it's something that we're very proud of. And so I have here the plaque that we received. Maybe not. Okay, anyway, there we go. All right, don't touch it now. Anyway, it's a bronze-level award, first one we received in six years, and we're looking forward to doing it again and exceeding this figure next year. I will mention a little bit of disappointment to Trustee Barry's challenge, that on the back of the Torch Run shirts, they list the top 32 departments. And while we're very, very proud of our accomplishments, we'll strive to make the shirt, but this year we fell short, but we'll try again. No promises, but I'm sure we will again try to make it. The—Brian was telling me the number one, I think, was Tinley Park Police Department, and well over—I may have mentioned yesterday, well over, I think, $130,000 they collected. So, well, that would be a great goal to try to reach, I don't think we'll be able to do that. So yesterday, Mayor and I, with Brian and Manager May, we met with three Special Olympians. One was Michelle Forsley, who was here two weeks ago, who is a Global Messenger, and so we took a photo with her to announce our award. our award. And the other part would be, you know, be quiet. May twentieth is another very important day for us in Special Olympics. It's cop on top and Dunkin' Donuts. Rain or shine, cold, uh, myself and my partner in crime, Deputy Chief Gunther, uh, start at like five-thirty in the morning and be up on the roof. So please come down and join us. Uh, please help us make a donation to Special Olympics. Um, as they say, one dollar, any dollar, all dollars help. That's one dollar more than we had yesterday. Uh, and also the department's selling shirts, hats, and pins, and if you're interested, the shirts are uh, fifteen, Mayor has one. Mayors are, they're uh, fifteen dollars apiece, uh, and we're glad to get those. If you want, contact myself. Uh, you can contact through Chief of Police at westmont dot al dot gov, and then we'll get to you. Um, but looking for Mayor, May twentieth, Friday, uh, hopefully it's warm and dry.
And Dunkin' Donuts on Sixty-third.
Dunkin' Donuts on Sixty-third. There's the Dunkin' Donuts at Ogden Avenue, which is new, and last year expressed an interest. However, we're not sure if we can spend all our volunteers out to do both. Uh, we talked maybe partnering with Oakbrook and uh, you know, doing something that way. So we'll work at that, and that would also help boost our numbers for next year. But definitely Sixty-third Street will be there as usual.
And just to mention, that's the only fundraiser our police department throughout the state. They all sp- uh, sponsor Special Olympics.
Yes, Mayor. It's sponsored by the Illinois Chiefs of Police, the DuPage County Chiefs of Police, and I believe in the National Chiefs of Police. It's our only charity sponsored by our police department. I know the Fire Department, uh, with the, I think was muscular dystrophy, but uh, we, this is our only one that we sponsor, uh, and uh, we ask everyone's help.
And I do have to say, it's the first time I took a picture with three gold medal winners from Olympic. All three of the individuals had gold medals.
I, I will tell you, I'll let this see, because Mary and I were both impressed yesterday. There was a little, I will say, she, there's a, a woman, she's this, this tall, I would say, and uh, asked her, what did you get your gold medals for? And it's powerlifting. And I said, okay. And I said, this is where I'm going to get embarrassed. How much did you powerlift? She bench pressed seventy-five pounds, and she's working on now to do eighty, and a deadlift, she did a hundred and twenty pounds, if I remember. At which point I said, bye-bye, nice to meet you.
She weighs a hundred and fifteen.
Yeah, she weighs a hundred and fifteen pounds, and she could deadlift a hundred and twenty. And I said, I get tired just looking at that, sitting on the floor. So uh, she was very, very accomplished. And Michelle and one other gentleman, I forgot his name too, um, they're all going back, they're all participating again in the Special Olympics and hopefully make the Summer Games down in Bloomington. And the Torch Run will come through Westmont, and I won't guarantee it, but every year they put us on the list sometime in the first or second week in June, and I'll have more information for you on that as well.
That's great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. That's all I have, Mayor.
All right.
Trustee Guzzo.
Uh, just a few items. Uh, our next Finance Committee meeting will be Thursday, March third at four o'clock here at the Village Hall. Um, and I would also like to let everyone know that the Saint John Council of the Knights of Columbus is holding their Fish Fry on Friday nights. It's during the luncheon season. It is from five to eight P M. At the Knights Hall, which is twenty-five North Cass Avenue. Good food, good friends. If you have a chance, step on by. Um, they always do a great, great job on that, and I just want to remind everyone about that. And that's all I have.
Thank you. And Trustee Barker.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, one item this evening. There's uh, a Westmont First Committee meeting on Monday at the library at uh, six P M. Four twenty-eight North Cass Avenue, and uh, some items that we're going to be discussing is a Westmont First Business Loyalty Card, um, some storm grain stenciling, and uh, some more partnering with uh, local charities like the P R C. So come out and join us on Monday evening, and uh, we'll make Westmont a better place.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the reports. I'll move on to agenda to items to remove from the consent agenda. Does any board member like to have any of those items removed? Seeing none, I'd ask Manager May to please read.
First on the consent agenda tonight are Village Board Minutes. Board to consider approving the minutes of the Village Board meeting held on February fourth, twenty sixteen. Next is Finance Ordinance Number Nineteen in the amount of one million, four hundred eighteen thousand, eight hundred sixty-three dollars, thirty cents. Next is the January Financial Report. Board to consider a motion to accept the financial report submitted for the month of January, twenty sixteen. And next are purchase orders. First purchase order, Omega Sign and Lighting, one hundred thirty-six thousand, seven hundred twenty-two dollars and twenty cents. This is for the um, Community Information Signs. This is the, you already awarded the contract. This is the purchase order accompanying that. Next purchase order is Westmont Park District, eight thousand, four hundred eighty-nine dollars, twenty-seven cents. Uh, that represents the um, the salary sharing or the, the salary for the shared employee. Next purchase order is Don Morris Architect, seven thousand, eight hundred twenty-seven dollars, thirteen cents. Represents the uh, Plan Review and Inspection Services in the Building Division. Next is S H I International Corp., seventeen thousand, sixty dollars, thirty-six cents, and that's in reference to the implementation of the two-factor authentication that you heard earlier this evening. Next purchase order, Village of Downers Grove, six hundred twelve thousand, two hundred eighty-eight dollars. Uh, this represents the uh, the, the Public Safety Dispatch costs for the, uh, for the year. So it's a, an open purchase order incoming to full amount, six hundred twelve thousand, two hundred eighty-eight dollars. The next purchase order is the Village of Downers Grove, also for dispatch costs, thirty-one thousand, five hundred seventy-eight dollars, and it represents the uh, true-up amount for the twenty-fifteen costs that we had. So uh, we have an estimated amount, and then there's, it's actually calculated, and this is the balance for twenty-fifteen. You'll hear more about that when we have the Special Public Safety meeting. Next purchase order is for Julie Incorporated, five thousand, four hundred ninety-five dollars, twenty-six cents. That represents our um, fees for being a member of the, it's a joint underground utility location service, and uh, the Water Division is a utility, and this is our cost with that, being a member of that. Next purchase order is West Central Municipal Conference, twenty-two thousand, five hundred dollars. That's for uh, purchase of one hundred and twenty-one trees for our spring tranting, spring treeplanting program. And West Central Municipal Conference is one of our consortiums that we use to get that nursery stock. Next purchase order, Vidido Tree Experts, twenty-two thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars, uh, for their services, for tree removal services relative to the, our Emerald Ash Borer issue. Next purchase order, also Vidido Tree Experts, three hundred, I'm sorry, six thousand, three hundred ninety dollars, and this is just for stump grinding. So sometimes we do uh, tree removals too, but they have the equipment to do the stump grinding, and they come uh, behind our crews. Next purchase order is the Illinois EPA, twenty-five thousand, nine hundred and eighty-four dollars and eighty-six cents. This is a payment amount for the uh, we heard at the Public Works Committee meeting about the EPA, the A R R A loan that we have. Uh, this is the installment for that. And last purchase order is H D Supply Water Works, forty-nine thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars. Uh, it's a aggregate meters and uh, water meter supplies uh, in the Water Division. That's the last purchase order. It brings the total of purchase orders to nine hundred forty-six thousand, three hundred sixty dollars, eight cents, which brings the total of purchase orders and Finance Ordinance Number Nineteen to two million, three hundred sixty-five thousand, two hundred twenty-three dollars, thirty-eight cents. Last on the consent agenda are three community events. First one is the twenty-sixteen Red White and Barbecue. Board to consider an ordinance approving the following requests for the twenty-sixteen Red White and Barbecue Festival hosted by the Westmont Lions Club. This year will be May twenty-seventh through twenty-ninth. The request is for community events permit, liquor license fee waiver, amusement fee waiver, live amplified sound permit, and tent permit fee waiver. Next event is twenty-sixteen Race to the Flag Five K. Board to consider an ordinance approving the following requests for the twenty-sixteen Race to the Flag Five K. That'll be held on May twenty-ninth, twenty sixteen. Two requests, the community events permit and a live amplified sound permit. Last event, twenty-sixteen Chicago Prostate Center Five K. Board to consider an ordinance approving the following requests for that event on, to be scheduled on September eleventh, twenty sixteen. That is for a community events permit and a live amplified sound permit. Those are the detail, that concludes the consent agenda. That's the details for those event requests, but it, there might be questions about the events themselves.
Well, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion by Addington to approve.
Second by Little.
Motion made in second to approve the consent agenda as presented, and um, on the question, Trustee.
Just uh, for point of clarification, uh, even though the Lions Club has asked for a waiver of the fee for the tents, we are going to be giving to the whoever is the, whoever is the low bidder, uh, you know, for the tents is going to be given a copy of our new ordinance, and we'll live strictly up to the rules of those ordinances. Uh, that's a very, um, that, that's a very hot topic with us, and a very, uh, one that we want to be sure we follow based on what we, what has happened in other communities. So um, even though we're asking for a waiver of, of a couple hundred dollar fee, we will live to the letter of that new ordinance that we passed.
Good point.
Trustee Addington, if, if the low bidder, if a local bidder is within like ten percent or something like that, we would still go with the local bidder, I would assume, like Butcher or something.
I'm not, I'm not, well, Butcher doesn't have any tents, but.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Yeah, not, not with the sizes that we take. The, there's only about a half a dozen companies out there that have, you know, the, the size tents and everything, but uh, um, yeah, if, if a local one ever came along, we would jump at it. Yeah. That, that goes for all of the things that we do.
Um, I have one comment. The three events that is part of the consent agenda, the uh, Race to the Flag, the Prostate Cancer Run, and also the Red White Barbecue are ongoing annual events, and all these requests have pretty much, other than the tent, um, have been part of their requests in previous years. So it's really nothing new. Um, but any additional questions? Anybody in the audience? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Neil.
Yes. Okay. Motion passes. We do not have any unfinished business, so we'll move on to new business. A, one thirty-four North Cass, Monkey Pencil Apparel. Board to consider an ordinance approving a development permit request for Monkey Pencil Apparel to allow the operation of apparel company in the V One Limited Business District. And I'd ask Community Development Director Ziegler to give us some information.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, the applicant is requesting to open a second story, or second floor business where he would sell retail T-shirts. He does his own embroidery work. This is an allowed use, and uh, we recommend approval. Uh, this is a, um, a very small business operation, um, but it'll be a nice help for him since he um, is currently working out of his house. So we're looking forward to welcoming, welcoming him into the downtown Westmont Business District community. And William McGee is here, um, representing his business. If you have any questions.
I know the first thing, we're going to ask you about the name.
It doesn't make sense.
No rhyme or reason.
If it was W M print, it'd be forgettable, so Monkey Pencil just doesn't make any sense.
Sorry.
I got a little piece of paper here. I have a sore throat, so, sorry, and an accent, so. Uh, my name is William McGee, and I've been running my business from, from home, and I would like to move my embroidery operation to a space in Westmont. Screen printing will stay at home, and I will not be moving, storing, or using inks, cleaners, or any other chemicals in this space. It is strictly for meetings and for my clients to, to view catalogs and sample my work. I already have a long list of Westmont clients from Ace, Fincatoris, Bishop's, Flux, Neat, Uncle John, Urban Legend, Vidido, Village Auto, and No Corner Sons. My wife Peggy owns the hair salon Flux. For the past ten years, I'm very happy with Westmont. I have been embroidering for five years, and the demand is getting larger. If I open a space, I will also bring a lot of traffic from my other out-of-town clients. There's already a buzz about my, the future of my business. I would like to give me the opportunity to open and grow in downtown Westmont. Thank you for your time.
Any questions?
I just comment, I, you know, William's selling himself short there. He's, you know, Clarendon Hills resident, but he's as Westmont as they come, and uh, he's helped us out with Illinois Reads and, and a lot of other programs that, that he's helped out with uh, on his own time. So I, really looking forward to having you.
Thank you.
Yeah, we need to, I need to get a hold of you, because now you are local here.
Yes.
Let's get you to do the shirts for the barbecue.
I'm, I'm all over.
You ready? Good.
I think one of the items through the years, we had T-shirt companies in town, and they've all kind of went away. And a lot of businesses, clubs, organizations, uh, look for some of the, for T-shirts, and we, a lot of times, well, most of the time, we go out of town.
Yeah.
So we'd love to have you in town now, so we can stay here. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved, Addington.
Second, Little.
Motion made in second, and, and on the question. Anybody in the audience seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes. Now, you're a Westmont business. Congratulations.
There you go.
Where do I sign? Thanks, guys.
New business B, Class Seventeen Liquor License from Ariano's. Board to consider an ordinance increasing the number of available Class Seventeen Liquor License by one to accommodate a request from Ariano's located at one fifty West Sixty-third Street in Westmont. And I ask our Deputy Liquor Commissioner Gunther to give us some more information.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, with me tonight, I'll make two introductions. Max Dickman, who's the Director of Real Estate Development, and Shane Lickte, who's the Store Manager from Ariano's, which is tentatively uh, scheduled to open mid-March, are here to talk about the, uh, the operation. Uh, staff recommends approving of the request. And Max, if you want to step forward and talk a little bit about your operation.
Again, this is one of the number one questions now. When are you going to open?
When are we going to open?
Yeah, that's what everybody's asking us.
Well, at this point, I would, mid-March, it's about as mid-March as you can get, probably on a Tuesday, but we haven't announced the official date yet, but um, you might be able to figure it out by that, so.
[laughing]
Yeah, my name is Max Dickman. I direct Real Estate Development for Roundy's. We're the parent company, Marianos. And uh, one thing to mention was, um, just to give you a little bit of background, you might have heard about Kroger. Um, Roundy's was recently acquired by Kroger. Um, that closed at the end of December of last year, but Roundy's is still being run as an, it's not independent clearly, but as a, a division of Kroger Company. Our CEO, uh, and the head of Roundy's is still Bob Mariano. Uh, the officers that have been involved the whole time are still here. So it's really the same management group running Roundy's and still running Marianos. So just to give you a little bit of ease, everything we're opening is the same Marianos that you've seen before. We're not opening a Kroger store.
Be Kroger sign.
No, no Kroger sign, no nothing. You're going to see a Marianos with Roundy's product, and um, it's going to have the oyster bar, it's going to have the barbecue, it's going to have, you know, all the items that you see in other Marianos. And uh, more than some, just because we're always advancing. Um, real quickly, just to give you a little bit of background about what we're doing in the store and how it's going to be laid out. Um, oh, it's open right here. Okay, so um, as far as our liquor service goes, we essentially are going to have um, four areas where you can purchase liquor for on-premises consumption. The area right here in green is um, our wine bar area, and according to the code, you guys request that we have, I think, no more than eight seats, and I think we have seven. So we meet the code and that requirement. The other three areas, this is our oyster bar, this is our barbecue, Todd's Barbecue, and this is our sushi bar. Those would also be self-service areas, and that would be basically, um, you know, wine, uh, alcohol service associated with the restaurant. Um, that also fits within the code. And then this is our seating area. Um, again, anyone who's purchasing something in those areas and, and wants to sit and eat on premises, they can do that, and there might be on-premises consumption in that seating area as well. Um, I guess the other, and there's other restaurant type items too throughout this whole area. Um, there's soup, there's a hot bar. Um, we have a grill, so if you take your, if you buy anything from the meat counter, you can get it grilled up there to take home or to eat on premises. So all that stuff is part of our operation, and, and that's how we, how we intend to merchandise um, within the store. The, um, and let me put one more screen up here, and this is the full floor plan. Yeah, before I do that, this is the start of the on-premises, or excuse me, the off-premises sale, so the package department. And I just, it's, gets a little busy when you try to look at the entire screen. Um, but there's the, the whole screen, and the package sale department would be these aisles right back there. So um, that's, that's our operation. Those would be, again, package sale. We close at ten o'clock, so as far as sale hours, we're going to be consistent with the ordinances. We'll close when we're ma, when, um, you know, there won't be any time when we're open that, at least at night, where there's, uh, there's no sale hours. So happy to answer any questions that you may have. Shane's here too, to, operationally, he's going to be our store director, so he's the face you're going to see when we open the doors when you have any questions, so.
All right. Um, do you know when the stoplight will be operational?
The stoplight, um, I, I think they tested it already. That's my understanding. So I don't think they're actually going to turn it on and, and actually use it until right before we open. But my understanding is it's energized, it's active. If they wanted to turn it on in three, four days, they could.
I guess, uh, I think I can add, when they put the message board...
Yes, I think I can add, when they put the message boards out warning traffic, the date does say for tomorrow, so I would be pretty confident that DuPage County will be out there doing that tomorrow morning.
Okay, yeah, like I said, I knew that it was active and ready to go. I didn't know if they were waiting for us or not, but we have, every other Monday, we have our engineering meetings where we talk about the stores, and that came up, so I knew it was ready to go, so I just didn't see that sign. Sorry for, if I missed anything on that one.
It's my best guess.
No, that is. No, sounds good.
So, Steve, will that just stay green? Is that a sensor light? Will that just stay green until they open? Is that the idea?
Yeah, it's a DuPage County highway, and it's their system to set up, but if it's like any other intersection with side streets, so that not only serves the entrance for this business, but it's the Suffield Garden residential area behind that lines up with that driveway, and typically it dwells on the main street or 63rd Street until there's a demand on the side. So, at 2:00 in the morning, you shouldn't see it moving, yeah.
Well, do I have a motion to approve the Class 17 Liquor License?
Motion by Addington to approve.
Second, Guzzo.
Any additional questions by anybody? I think needless to say, we're all anxious to find out when that opening is. I think that's, a lot of people are excited about seeing that here in Westmont, so.
Yeah, and I'm not trying to beat around the bush with that, it's just one of those things that, you know, in case something didn't happen from within the store, we just, until we know for sure, we mail out those invitations for our grand opening, we generally, that's the date we actually physically announce, but mid-March on a Tuesday, that's what we're planning.
Any additional questions? Anybody in the audience? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
It was approved, thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it, guys.
New business C, WSCC Hotel Motel Grant Request. The Board to Consider an Ordinance Awarding our Westmont Special Event Corporation $10,000 from the Hotel Motel Grant Fund for their activities. So, I'd ask Finance Director Parker, do you have any additional information?
Just to remind the board, this is something that was discussed at the last Finance Committee meeting. This is the same thing we did for the WSCC last year, just as a way to help support the organization.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved, Addington.
Second, Nero. Motion made in second to approve. On the question. Seeing none, roll call.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Okay, moving on. D, Drug-Free Workplace Policy Revised. Board to Consider an Ordinance Approving Revisions to Section 62-75, the Drug-Free Workplace of our Personnel Code of Ordinances. Our HR Director Crane.
Thank you, Mayor. The Public Works Department has been testing post-accident all along, and that is due to the Department of Transportation CDL regulations, and our Fire Department started testing post-accidents since 2009. And just to keep everything consistent, our Executive Safety Committee made a recommendation that we would adjust our policy, and that's why we bring this before you. So, staff recommends that the Board approves this.
Takes it across the board.
Essentially for uniformity across all departments.
Basically cleaning it up, making it consistent. Do I have a motion? Motion to approve, Barker. All right. Second, Nero. Motion made in second. Any additional questions? Tom, roll call, please.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Okay, we'll keep HR Director Crane there for item E, Dual Village Employment Policy. This is a new policy. Board to Consider an Ordinance Adding Section 62-80, a Dual Village Employment Policy to our Personnel Code of Ordinances.
Okay, thank you. This new policy actually documents a practice that was discontinued about eight to 10 years ago. The reason that this practice was discontinued was because employees who work for more than one position in the village, especially if they're full-time, and then work a part-time position, when overtime starts after 40 hours, they would have to be, we would have to use a blended rate. And so, for example, if some, if an employee worked at a rate of $28 an hour, and then another, worked in another position of $16, they would actually have to work, we would have to pay overtime at a blended rate of combining those $2 amounts together, and then the overtime would be paid at $33 an hour rather than the $24 an hour. So, instead of taking the $16 an hour, if the position, if the employee was working the position that was the $16 an hour, after overtime started at the 40, after 40 hours, they would, we would actually have to use the blended rate, not the lower rate. FLSA doesn't look at what position they're working once the 40 hours starts. They say you have to combine those two rates together.
That's where the paycheck comes from.
That's correct.
This is not an issue within any department, but it's when they work across departments like Public Works and Fire, or Police and Public Works, and.
Right.
Those types of dual.
And so, also, besides that being complicated, the other factors are that if an employee is in IMRF, both positions count towards wages, towards their pension, and then the other complicating factor is if an employee is injured, if they, you would have to actually pay for lost time for both positions. So, there's a lot of complicating factors.
And this is designed for full-time employees?
Pardon?
Full-time.
It wouldn't matter if you're injured.
No, I mean, the ordinance is designed for full-time employees, not to have dual employment?
Yes, that is a good question. So, the language does allow if a part-time employee wanted to have two part-time positions, that would be allowed.
As long as it doesn't go over the 40-hour per week.
Correct.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Motion, Addington, to approve.
Second, Nero. Motion made in second to approve. On the question.
Do we have employees that are multiple roles at this point?
We have, not for, I'm trying to think of when the.
We had a retiree.
We had two Public Works employees that were in the Fire Department, and.
We have, we have one left.
It's probably been more than.
One left.
One left, and that would be Lynn, yeah.
Would that grandfather that person in if they're already, so any new hires, or anybody who doesn't have a second job cannot take within the village if you're full-time? Okay.
Yeah, we'll have to talk to John about making sure that, if language is put in there, that it's grandfathered.
Any additional questions? Anything to add, Chief, or, no? I'd ask for a roll call, please.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Okay, motion passed. We'll still keep Director Crane there, because the new business F is Social Media Policy. This is a new policy. Board to Consider an Ordinance Adding Section 62-79, our Social Media Policy to the Personnel Code of Ordinances.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And this was on our radar for several years, and we felt that this was a good time to finally put the policy in place. We do have employees now that are actually using social media in a very positive way. In particular, our School Resource Officer, and also our Public Relations Director is using social media, as well as a few other employees. So, the policy is in place now, and also the Public Relations Director and the Village Manager will be developing protocols and procedures, as was delineated in the policy.
I'm just surprised we haven't had it yet, so, do I have a motion?
So moved, Guzzo.
Second, Nero. On the question. Seeing none, roll call.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Motion passes, and we'll move on to new business G, Engineering Agreement 2016 MFT Resurfacing Project. Board to Consider an Ordinance Authorizing an Engineering Agreement with Seco Consultants Incorporated for Material Testing and Inspection Services of the 2016 MFT Resurfacing Project. And I, Public Works Director Ramsey.
Thank you, Mayor. We've used Seco in the past, but we're asking to use them again for material service, for testing inspections of our MFT project in 2016, our Spring MFT. We talked about that earlier in the Public Works Committee meeting tonight. The purpose is to resurface approximately 7.6 miles of roadway, along with other related work. The request is for a sum of $16,675 for material testing and inspection services for the village's annual MFT project. Staff recommends using Seco again.
I have a motion.
So moved, Addington.
Second, Nero. On the question. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
New business H, the Ad hoc Strategic Plan Committee. Board to Consider a Motion Authorizing the Creation of the Ad hoc Strategic Plan Committee, with the Mayor to appoint committee members. For those who are strategic planned, this is going to be the committee that will drive that plan and see to it that we work on it, and we ask Trustee Addington to chair that from the Board's standpoint, and I'm going to turn it over to Trustee Addington to give us some more information about that committee.
All right. I've been talking to several people, and we've got several people who have agreed to serve. So, right now, the committee would be myself as the Chair, Steve May, representing from the village's side, Larry Forsberg, representing the Chamber's side, and Amy Quattron from School District 201, Amy Porter, who a lot of you know, and she was involved with this process from the very beginning, very energetic and enthusiastic, and then another citizen from the South Side, Rebecca Shabel, and she participated in this process. She came to every meeting, went to all of them, and I've talked to all of them, and they're very excited to be part of it. There's one more seat to fill. I've been talking with Shannon over at Urban Legend, she, I was hoping she'd have gotten back to me before the meeting tonight. She's seriously considering it, but I haven't got a firm commitment yet, so.
You just put that challenge out on TV now.
I did, yes.
No pressure.
But again. Yeah, right, no pressure.
These will be published meetings. The Board is always welcome. Trustee Addington will update us on this. I think I entertain a motion to point that committee.
Motion to approve, Little.
Second, Barker.
You beat Addington that time. Motion made in second to approve the committee. On the question.
You should vote for something you're involved in.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
And moving on to miscellaneous, is there any items that either the Board or anybody from staff, our Economic Development Director in Chamber or Executive Director?
All right, Larry. Good evening. I just would like to put out a last moment reminder. Tomorrow's our deadline for our Economic Outlook Luncheon presentation. We have Bill Strauss coming to speak with us, and we have confirmation that Lieutenant Governor will also be joining us. So, we'll not only be talking about what's going on with the economy this coming year, when it's been a pretty interesting start to the year with the stock market, but we'll also be talking about the state of the state with the Lieutenant Governor. So, that will be next Wednesday. Unfortunately, because of the construction at the Hilton, we'll be in Downers Grove at